All the work session for CDB's Grand Forks for Tuesday, April 25th, 2017 is now 5:00. Executive Assistant, please call roll.
Mayor Steve DiAndere.
Here.
Council President Harf Alstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassil.
Here.
Council Members Claire Nibader.
Here.
Mike Kretschewinski.
Here.
Tim Reapell.
Here.
Henry Tweeten. Mark Demers.
As term quorum, number one, request to purchase mower, Mr. Stordahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. City budget is $64,000 to purchase a new mower. We received pricing through the Minnesota State Contract Page and MTI Distributing. You see the price below here is $62,787.42. So our recommendation is to purchase from MTI Distributing a new Toro 4100D Grounds Master mower through the Minnesota State Contract pricing of $62,787.42 and declare surplus for trade number, unit number 353, which is a 1998 Toro mower.
Do we have any questions? Mr. Tweeten.
Do we trade in or do we keep the old one or what do we do?
Yep, asking for, to declare surplus and trade the, trade the old mower.
Okay.
And it's pretty, I don't really think we'll get much for it. They're supposed to be coming down this Thursday, but it's.
But will you trade it in on this or sell it separately?
No, we'll trade it on this. Yep. There's not much left of it. It doesn't, it's pretty much the parts mower now.
Mr. Stordahl.
Thank you.
Number two, request update cemetery pricing, Mr. Hutten.
For the most part, the, this is kind of a housekeeping for the cemetery. We met as a cemetery commission last week and reviewed the price list, which hasn't been approved by city council since 2013, June 2013. Since that time, we've had one fairly big change in the, kind of the operation of the cemetery. At that time, the cemetery was involved in the digging of the grave sites. Basically, we were hiring the diggers and in turn invoicing the funeral homes for the cost of that. We've since removed ourselves from that. Now the funeral home is directly contacting and dealing with the pricing to the digger. So the city is, is just, the city and cemetery are moved from that part of it. So the interment fees are all lowered because of that. Now the, the charge that we have proposed, it's more of a perpetual care of the cemetery, of that plot than it is including the fee for digging. So that's the big change, kind of in the update. The other one is the price for the columbarium. The new columbarium was installed last September to match the one that was put in in 2011. And there's just a, we're asking for a little price increase on that so that both columbariums are listed and available for the same price. There are two things just to make note of on that price list. One, a couple typos. On the double niche for the columbarium, the middle level, the proposed price, I have listed $1,800. That should read $1,900, an increase of 100, to be consistent with all the rest. And then on disinterment, under disinterment fees, they're both listed at 750. That's the same case as the others in which that was a fee for the digger to open up a grave site. So that should be changed to $200 to pay for the administration and fees of our employees to go in and maybe do some prep work on that site, but the large portion would be, again, the cost of the digger to open it up. Any questions on this?
Just as a point of curiosity, I see there's quite a few commitments there. Do you have any idea how many lots were sold last year?
Well, I'd want to go back and look with, rather than just telling you off the top of my head. I, I can't even, can't even say a guess.
If you get time, you can bring us in total of people in there now and how many new lots are sold. The reason I ask that question is that eventually we hope that we'll get sufficient funds in there, that the incommods of perpetual funds will take care of the maintenance of the cemetery.
Sure.
That was the original intent. By the way, it was a big battle to get that. We fought a lot of people.
Yeah, that's something I can look at and bring back to you.
Mr. Demers.
Thank you. With these changes, obviously, there's some going up and down. There's a few moving parts. Have you forecasted the budget balance impacts of this? Do you foresee it to remain balanced or do you see a deficit or surplus or how do you?
You know, to be quite honest, all of the ones that are going down, it kind of goes back to where it's housekeeping. It's basically what we've been charging for a couple of years since we removed ourselves from the digging. These are the prices that have been charged and this is more of a, it just needs to be formally approved by the council, so it's more of a housekeeping matter. I haven't, I didn't do any number, really projected look at numbers on it.
So, okay. So why, why were we just, I won't even get into it. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything?
I do have one item that, we'll be bringing back the garage. You saw that and then if you looked at the notes on that garage, it was something that we looked at building a couple of years ago and then got added on to the golf cart or the golf, with the golf course. So that'll be coming back at you. Also, if you take a ride out there and look at the one columbarium, you know, we put a columbarium out there a long time ago. It's made of marble and it's actually, if you look at our rules, marble is not allowed in the cemetery, but for some reason it was put in. Truthfully, I'd really like to look at replacing that columbarium and just moving it, moving those people that are in those spots into a newer columbarium that would match the two that are out there. It's, my worry is that it could fall apart. It's hard to replace. We can't put name, Bryant's having a tough time putting name tags on there to hold. It's just, it, it's a disaster, really, and we need to, so we might need to come back and, at, at some point in time and look at, it might cost us a little bit of money, but in the long run, I think it's going to help. So, just to promote you a little bit.
Anybody else have anything?
Just to add to that, thanks, Mr. Grassil, for bringing that up. The, the thing to note on that too is that that, there aren't any niches listed on this price list for sale in that columbarium. We just haven't been selling it because we don't want to sell somebody a bad product.
Thank you, sir. Move on to number three, discussion and agreement with DNR. Reed.
Thank you again. Following the work session conversation two weeks ago, we followed up with the DNR, Gary Hoff, the Regional Manager of Parks and Trails, with some of the comments and discussion that we had. One, the, the primary one being asking for an increase, increase in the total contract amount for the remaining four years to 1.2 million. His response and suggestion to that was that if we wanted to look at an increase in the total contract amount like that, it would require going back to the, the Office of Administration and Budgeting within the DNR in St. Paul. And that process could take up to a couple of months to complete. And under which time, we would be operating without a signed agreement with the DNR and any expenses that were incurred through the operation of the campground in that time wouldn't be shareable, so to speak. So what he suggested is that we re-sign it in good faith that we'd have further conversation and then that led us to just proposing a one-year agreement to re-up it through December 31st, 2017 with the understanding that, starting this Thursday, when they come and meet with myself and Mr. Mayor, that we would start the conversation for a longer-term agreement. So that's what's in front of you today is a, a one-year contract extension. The total contract amount on that still reads $750,000. Essentially, that's $750 for this year. And then we would renegotiate everything going forward from here.
Mr. DiAndere.
What's weird about that is, that was just the top end limit. It didn't change at all how funds would be distributed. It just kept it so that if in that last year, for example, if you hit what was the top end limit, it would just be allowed to go to that.
Yeah.
But I guess it was a substantive change that would have to go back up their pipeline.
Yeah, and, and that's exactly it. I, I made that, you know, that same comment in visiting with them and that's really what it would become is just that, it's the timeframe of getting that changed within their process.
Mr. Grassil.
For the one-year contract, because we went through this process with them a while back and it was a battle to get things adjusted where they're at. So I think if we can get them to agree to a one-year contract and then bang, I'll have a contract with them for a long period of time, I think would be way more beneficial for us than, than trying to leave us with $30,000, $40,000 in work and they're going to split their profit.
I would plan to talk to them on Thursday a little bit about streets. Will you be ready to have just a general conversation about streets? Because I know that's going to happen during the next, say, three-year period with this new contract in effect, you know, after this year. And so if we could have some general thoughts ready to go as we talk to them about the streets.
Yep. And we, we do have that, WSN has done some work the last couple of years in looking at what needs to be done in the prices, price points for that. So I could share that with you before Thursday too.
Nice.
Anybody else have anything else? Seeing none, thank you, sir. Repairs on a compressor at VFW Arena.
Okay, thanks. Thanks again. I apologize for the short notice on this one. Just, it's some, some, a last minute addition to the agenda and it's, it's an important and time-sensitive topic, so I wanted to get it in front of everybody. Simcoe Refrigeration came in in early April and did some investigative work at the VFW Arena to see just what we had going on within the compressor systems that were causing us to go down on low oil pressure throughout the season. Got to the point as the season went along that we were running it around the clock at pretty much its highest horsepower that it could, just so that we could maintain that oil pressure. So they found, there's some good news. They, in doing that investigative work, they opened up one of the two compressors, opened it up and took out all the valves and everything. They found one part that they think was the reason it was going down on low oil pressure was an oil release valve that was completely shredded. There was nothing left of it. And then in finding that, all of the, the valves, they're suggesting all of the valves and piston rings all get replaced, which has not been done in this, in this machine in the 20 years that we've been running in the VFW Arena. It's never been opened up like this and been done. In different compressors, for example, the Civic Center, the compressors that are in that building, it's suggested it's done every 10,000 hours. And we put on about 5,000 hours a season. So to put a little bit of perspective there, I think part of why that was never done is, is in previous, people that have worked on the maintenance of it, the outside contractors and vendors we've had, they've said that this type of compressor shouldn't need that type of overhaul. But now we're to the point that being 20 years into it, if we want to continue to operate it, it's in need of it. So the prices that they've suggested are $10,347.32 plus taxes and freight for the, the repair, the complete overhaul of one compressor. In talking with their service manager, he's suggesting that if, if and when we do this work, it's, we're going to have a mint machine that is going to take us as many years as we need it to, want it to, or need it to. They were very impressed when they opened it up just at how clean it was inside. So I think that that's a, a reason to be optimistic. A couple just of the budget implications of it and just some numbers that are on the RCA handed out. And just again, to be clear, this is information that I've just basically gotten since Friday afternoon and some conversation with them yesterday. So Ms. Anderson is out this week. I haven't talked with her about how it impacts the budget, but in our repairs and maintenance, we had budgeted $12,000. And with the work that we've already had done on various things within the arena, that it'll be down to just over 8,000 left. So again, I'd, I'd want to defer to, you know, some maybe further conversation between now and next week with Ms. Anderson and Mr. Murphy about where some of those funds might come from to be able to make this happen. And then the last bit of information with it is just the, the upcoming summer camps that have always been held by the Blue Line Club, the month of June, they've, they've typically always rented that arena from us to put in summer ice and to offer camps, both for them and the Figure Skating Club has also rented ice from them for it. We, we had a verbal agreement with them going back to February, recognizing that we were having some compressor issues there and we didn't quite know what it entailed and that we were going to have to open it up as soon as the season ended and just find out. And it was noted with them at that time that if it's not able to keep ice, then we're just, we're just not going to be able to meet their need for ice with that because the other two arenas we have, the Blue Line Arena and Civic Center, aren't set up as well as the VFW to keep ice. I did follow up with Midwest Refrigeration, who is kind of the manager of that, that ice system in the Blue Line that designed that. And they think that between the number, the horsepower that's in there and then the fact that we don't have an air circulation or reclaim system in there, it just wouldn't work to have summer ice. Our staff feels that same way, so the recommendation would be to, to contact the Blue Line Club and let them know that unfortunately, we won't be able to, to have ice for the month of June. So there's kind of two things there to, to bounce questions off of if you have any.
Mr. Refill.
Is it possible that we can do a three-way split between the Park and Rec, Blue Line Club and Northern Lights Figure Skating? Have them kick in on something like this since they're the main users of the rink?
I would certainly be open to asking them that.
I, I think it would be beneficial. You're talking probably $3,000, $4,000 each. And I know they've got it in their budgets.
Mr. Bitter.
Thank you. Any way to get a rush on the parts so it's here mid-May and they can have it ready by June?
No, I did ask that question too and this is, the, the parts are, for all intents and purposes, in the United States, this machine's obsolete and the, the parts aren't available in the US or Canada. They, they're going to be in ship from Denmark. So it's, this, it's pretty much the timeframe we have to work with.
And the other compressor could not, could not hold ice for that month?
No, basically the, you know, in talking with our staff and in talking with the people at Simcoe, no one really wants to put trust in it. You know, I have to really, with my level of knowledge with it, defer to their opinion on it. And they, both of the, the people I talked to at Simcoe, the first thing that they state when we talk about it is that it's already a system that's not designed for summer ice. So we're maybe already, always have had in, in the summer to work harder than maybe it would if it was designed that way. Now with that said, we've always maintained ice just fine. But from their perspective, and I can understand it, they, they don't want to go out on a limb and say, yeah, your system that was already working too hard all winter to work in cold temps is going to, yeah, it'll make it. I don't think they want to go out on a limb and say that. And the staff that we have that have much more experience within it than I do, don't feel comfortable with that, with putting that out there.
That one has the blown oil valve like this one?
I would say it's likely, yeah.
That's, you, I remember years ago, it would chug, chug, chug and then, and then the next year, they'd just flip to the other one and never actually fix it.
Right.
It'd just go back and forth like in alternating years and never get to the root of the problem.
Right. And that's exactly the way it's been operated is it's, we've just run one for one season, give it the year off and go back to the next. And, and that's the issue we had this year was the, the compressor that we're proposing work would be done on it. This season was supposed to be its off-season, but we didn't do any work on it at the end of last season. And so now this season, when we started and compressor number two started having the same issues and going down, we switched back to one, even though it was having those issues at the end of 2015, 16 ice season. So basically, we have two compressors that are in the same state. I would say it's likely that it has the same issue that this one has.
How deep in is the oil valve? Is that a hard thing to get at or is that a relatively easy thing?
You know, they've got it all torn apart right now.
And the other one?
Yeah, it, I mean, it's, no, it took them, they, they had to take everything apart to get to it. It was the very last piece that he found when he got into it, yeah.
So we're going to call the Blue Line Club and say, we don't have any ice for you in June, but, but you have vapor fixes on it?
They might want to go July.
Everything's all out already. I mean, they've already got people signing up for it.
Yeah, they do. That's exactly it.
No chance at all you can think of to, to make ice? Big Star Trek.
And again, I want to be completely upfront here that this is the very first, I've talked with anybody about it. So there has been no conversation with the Blue Line Club up to this point. This is the, outside of Mark Dragich and myself, this is the first that anybody has seen or heard of it. So we could, if, you know, I don't want to go to the Blue Line Club as well as anyone else does and say, we don't have ice.
Is it worth another call to Simcoe and just say, if, any way possible, you can get the parts in 30 days rather than 60 days, you know, rush order, fly me over to Denmark and I'll pick them up and carry them back in a suitcase.
Or be line it for the valve and the other one. Is there a way to just, now that they've seen it, right?
Yeah. I can, I can ask the question. I have not asked that question to that extent of.
Order tomorrow and we'll, we'll do it. If they'll, if they'll do it. If they say yes.
As long as it doesn't add a dollar.
Right. That's right.
Blue Line might be more apt to kick in money if they, hey, we get ice if we do this fixed.
Mr. Demers, do you have something?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I think it's, it's good to start looking at how we partner with different groups, our, you know, our service organizations or, or support organizations. But I guess, I, I tend to believe that this wouldn't be the best spot to ask them to pitch in on, for two reasons. We're going to talk about in number eight, about some licenses and fees and all those type of things. I think what we should do as the manager of a building is come up with the actual costs, the foreseeable costs, and come up with a great, or with a long-term rate plan and rental plan and all those things that, that accommodate all those issues and, and have it paid out over time. I just, to me, while it's a big project, it's not a big project. And I think what we want to do is hold that, those type of thing in reserves for when we do have a really big project. I think, like I said, I think what we can do for those clubs, the support clubs, is to give them a level, a level trajectory of where we're going to go, charge accordingly, and then take care of the maintenance. It's our building, it's our maintenance. Yes, other people use it or whatever, but I think that the support club should be support and not the operations. And I, I just, and like I said, I think it's trying to, you know, get on budget and stuff like that too. But I just, I think if we want them to run the building, we should, I, I don't think that's a great way to go down this or whatever. So I think there's going to be bigger things down in the future that we're going to have to ask them for money for, so, two cents.
So basically what, I think my best scenario was to go back and ask them on the other compressor, is there any way that if we can't get the parts here, is there any way that I think can run? I mean, are we, not to put it this way, skating on thin ice, if it, you know, if it does run and then it quits, I mean, I think maybe we need to look at that really hard and talk to them. If we can get the parts, great. If not, I wouldn't want to talk to Blue Line either, especially they do this every year. And it's, you know, a lot of people that go through that camp in the month of June.
Absolutely.
Exhaust everything we can exhaust until, so, so. Mr. Refill.
I guess I'd beg to disagree with Mr. Demers. I was Blue Line Club President over in Grand Forks for nine years, on that board for 28. The compressors at the Blue Line Club Arena over there, the compressors at the Perper Arena, those were all part of our helping because it's all deals with the youth, the youth hockey over there. That's what they're there for. We came in with the bigger projects down the line. We built arenas, three of them, refurbished a fourth. Fine and dandy, it's all great. This is one area that they need that ice. This is a good time to have them help us if we can. And if he can, by the grace of God, get them to say yes and get them parts here, it would, I know that Blue Line Club camp, they really want to have it.
Anybody else have anything? I think you have your.
I think the clubs know also, we support them a lot. You know, all of these arenas are very, very heavily subsidized by the city because we value youth activities, fitness. You know, watching those sweaty heads coming off the ice in January, you know, where else would they be? Down in the basement playing video games, right? So to have these, these venues for these kids to get in the habit of staying in shape all year and then a summer camp where you can hone your skills and whatnot, it's good stuff.
Do you have anything else, Mayor? Sir?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Number five, policy on sale/lease, option of city-owned land, Mr. Gordy.
As we've progressed with this policy, what we have found is there are some parcels that are being asked about that really have virtually no value. The cost of the appraisal is greater than the cost of the land itself, the value of the land itself. We require the property owner, the purchaser, to pay for the appraisal as well as the engineering costs for preparing any documents. As a starting point, what we'd like to do, what we propose to do on these, these types of parcels that have no, no ability to be built on, is to start with the assessed value as a value to see if that is close to or can be used as a value for negotiations with these purchasers on the properties and use that because it will be a less cost to the buyer and less cost to us if they decide not to buy it. That's a cost that we absorb. So it's just a small revision of the policy for these types of parcels to allow us to start with the assessed value as opposed to an appraised value.
Can you give me a scenario where that would come into play, where someone would like?
The parcel near Sacred Heart that they proposed to use for their parking lot, the appraisal for that parcel is $2,800. We anticipate the value of that parcel will be somewhere $1,000, $1,500 at this point.
I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, that's the type of parcel.
One of my partners as well.
I'm sorry?
One of my partners as well.
We have a request to purchase some, or the purchase of a, part of a piece of land immediately west of the Hardware Hank store as well. It's about 40 feet of land. The appraisal, we anticipate, because we have not put it up yet, we anticipate the appraisal will be somewhere in the $25,000 to $3,000 range. And we anticipate the value of that 40 feet by maybe 100 feet, 4,000 square feet, to be no more than what the appraisal amount is. So we're running into some parcels like that that were not part of what was had anticipated.
Mr. DiAndere.
I, I like the way you worded that. As I read through this, that was my one thought is just as, as a starting point. You know, if there was a pretty large track that just accidentally got appraised low, I'd hate for us to be bound to that price. So I like the way you worded that as, as a starting point and you can use your own calculations on a per-square-foot basis, say, you know what, it really needs to be more like this price. So I, I like it as a, as a starting point, as a way to save the cost of the appraisal.
Anybody else have anything? Mr. Tweeten.
I would like to see him expedite a parcel to Sacred Heart. It's very important to them. It's room for, I recall it, 22 parking spots, right? And they, they need it very badly for many things. Of course, they have large masses at certain times of year, but they have a lot of athletic events and it's, it's very beneficial. It ties in with what they've got and it's good utilization of the land. And the quicker it's done, the better. I know that they're anxious for it. One of the things you have to remember is that with an age- One of the things you have to remember is that with an aging population, and of course, there's a lot of other people who are handicapped, it's important that the closer you can put parking lots to churches and public buildings, the better off we are. So I, I'd like to see it done immediately so that they can get it in the nice weather.
That parcel was, is already in the process for the appraisal. We anticipate the appraisal back momentarily. The appraisers had that order for work for about four weeks now, so we anticipate that back in the near future. They also, on that parcel, are going to have to do some things because of the way the property lines on that parcel are right now and some adjustments with the easements, that's gonna have to be straightened out as part of the process in that property. Assuming that property is sold to them, it has to be straightened out.
That's involving the city easements?
The easements the city has, some utility easements, and it will, Mrs. Ellis is quite concerned about that, to make sure that's...
Anybody else have any questions on the policy change? No questions on the policy change? Thank you, Mr. Gordy. Move on, discussion on industrial land?
EDA asked me to look into the possibility of expanding the industrial park. We know what the, what the value was for the parcel that we looked at for that other business down on the southwest side. We also looked at other, based upon what the EDA asked, looked at another parcel. Both appraisals are fair. The problem is, is it will cost us a considerable amount of money. The EDA by itself does not have the dollars to do that. The EDA plus the city do not have enough dollars to do that. And if we even include water and light, I don't know if there'd be enough money to make the purchase. And even particularly, when we add in the cost of infrastructure extension, we're gonna be far short of the dollars. Rather than do that, there are some, there are still parcels available in the, in the current industrial park. I've started working with some of the property owners out there to help them to market their properties. I've talked to the realtors last week about working with them so we could put information that they have on properties and buildings that might be available. I'd like to work through that at this point and continue to do that. The EDA has asked me, if we can find dollars to make the purchase, go ahead and do it. But until we find dollars, it's such a big investment by the city, I don't want, I really hesitate to ask us to become land-rich and cash-poor. I think we need to be able to have assets available for other things.
I think one of the best things we talked about before too is that if there is need for land, additional land, which would be to the east there, would be to, as we move on and as it goes, do that. You know, purchase whatever land we needed, whoever was looking at it, and do the infrastructure at that time. I think it's tough. I know there, in the past, we were lucky to get, I think it was $249,000, $250,000 to help with the infrastructure on the current industrial land. And I know that we go in the future, hopefully we can maybe get some of that money also again from them. I think what you're looking at and looking at, you know, you put the numbers on here, 7.7 million, it's a lot of money. I mean, and it's, does it just sit there and we look at it? I think, and that's the thing that worries me, is that, like you said, you know, be land-rich.
It, our absorption rate is not large for industrial land right now. And if we can change that so that we are having much more rapid absorption for industrial land, then it becomes worthwhile to go back and look at it. Not only that, if we increase our absorption rate so that we're going through land faster, outside industrial developers may also be willing to pitch in because they could see how they could make money on a project like this as well. But right now, we just aren't seeing that type of absorption.
Mr. Tweeden?
One of the things that you probably have all noticed is you get the DED from the state. State's been putting a lot of money into industrial parks. And if we do decide to buy some land, why, we should go down there with our hands in front of us. And it makes a lot of difference because the people that go in there are going in and reduce costs, which is very important when you're starting a new business.
I think exactly what I was just talking about, I think it was back in 2007, 2008 is when we got it. That's where the money came from, the program you were talking about. So that's exactly what Mr. Gordy needs to look at if we need to move forward with anything at that time.
And when we looked at the other parcel, I did talk with them, found out what's available. That is one of the programs that, that I know DED is seeking funding for. And if they can get additional funding for it, they would like, they would appreciate that. But it's still up to the legislature and the governor to approve funding for programs like that.
Mr. Demers?
Thank you. On the revertable parcels, is that the word?
Reverter.
What was the price, the square foot price on those?
I have to go back and look, I don't recall. I, I do know that, if I remember the reverter properly, we buy the parcels back at the cost that they, we sold them for. That's what I think I recall from having read them, but it's been a few months since I looked at them.
And how many parcels are currently eligible for?
About five or six.
Five or six? What fund was that, where those parcels, the sold parcels?
I'd have to research to see where the money came from originally.
Well, I mean, where did it go? When we sold those parcels?
I don't know. I don't know. I'd have to talk with Mrs. Anderson to see where the money was put at that time.
I guess, yeah, I would...
I, I don't, I don't know the answer, I'm sorry.
I guess my first thing is, is that we should be a little bit more upfront with folks that have those parcels and, and request that they either move things along or revert them back. Because the intent, like in that old project, was not to, not for investment property for folks. It was meant to create jobs, sustain jobs, those type of things. And I know there are businesses out there that are looking, so I think we should move that along abruptly.
And the EDA has asked me to do that. We just put it off because of the circumstances of the property to allow some time to pass before that occurred.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you, sir. Number seven, discussion ATV snowmobile ordinance, Ms. Nelson?
Included in the packet was RCA, staff, Jason, I believe Gary Larson, Chief Headland, and Mr. Palowski, and Mr. Hutton. We all met and kinda discussed, you know, ATVs. The council had talked about possibly a designated route or, you know, best way to get out of town. One of the things that did come up, Mr. Palowski informed us, since I'm not an ATV avid rider, there's many things I don't know. But he explained to us that in order to be able to ride in the ditches, you have, you're supposed to have a decal on your ATV that's renewed every three years with the DNR. Also, looking on the DNR website, anybody under the age of sixteen is required to take, I believe, two separate courses. One is like an online course, one is a hands-on course to make sure that the riders are well aware of what, you know, they're supposed to do. So we, we talked about actually many different things during the time that we spent together discussing this. But one of the big things was, you know, if you guys do allow ATVs, basically, well, and one of the things that Mr. Galt had sent was our special vehicle use ordinance. In that, basically designating a route, telling people shortest way, or shortest route to, you know, if you live on the north end, shortest way to River Road and head north out of town. If you live, I should have a map up right now, sorry. If you live west of 220, north of Highway 2, shortest way to River Road, go north out of town. If you live east of 220 and north of Highway 2, Fifth Avenue, out of town. South end, we're trying to keep, the idea was to keep people off of Bigland Road, maybe focus on Reinhardt Drive. Get people on Reinhardt Drive as a designated route, shortest way to Reinhardt Drive. That way, there's also a gas station there where they'd be able to, you know, if it's a designated route, they could use that route. Yes, get to Orton's and, you know, get back out of town. With the other side, there are some that are quite close to, they, well, very close to Reinhardt, if they are very careful crossing Bigland Road. Otherwise, if we thought they lived out by Self Point School, get to 13th and then take that county road out of town. Areas to completely avoid, and I believe it was included, they cannot be on federal or state highways or state trunk highways. So business Highway 2 would be completely off limits. Highway 2 is completely off limits. Highway 220 is completely off limits. We were kinda looking into state aid, if state aid streets would be included on that. That's something we're not 100% clear on at this point in time, but something we were looking into. And the other part, or I looked at it today and I apologize, I didn't look at it sooner. One of the things that is included in the ordinance that Ron had sent for special-use vehicle, which is basically a motorized golf cart, they are permitted on the roadways and all the streets except on federal or state trunk highways. They are totally prohibited from operation on Central Avenue, Demers Avenue. One thing we did talk about, especially with additional traffic right now, is keeping them completely out of the downtown area. That's something that could be revisited at one point. We had talked, 'cause like with snowmobilers, you kinda go from place to place. And if we wanna be able to let them downtown, you know, maybe go have a bite to eat and then go ride again. But we just thought at this time, for the next two years, with all the construction and extra traffic downtown, to keep them out of there. One thing that we had pulled, we looked at were snowmobile routes. And for whatever reason, we couldn't pull up the East Grand Forks Trail system. But when we pulled up the Grand Forks one, they did have drop-off sites. So it was also something we had considered. If you're in a, you know, let's just say you live east of City Hall here, and you don't, you know, you don't wanna cross Highway 2, you don't wanna try and get to Forks to get on River Road. If we could designate drop-off sites to allow people to trailer, you know, get close to the edge of town or get close to that designated roadway, and then they'd be able to get out of town. Or if they lived on the north end and wanted to go south of town, instead of them driving all the way around, they could go to that drop-off point and utilize that spot. I guess, included in the packet was also a portion of special-use vehicles. Mr. Palowski came very prepared. He had, it's 25 pages altogether. I included the first about nine pages of it, kinda touches on different things. One thing for sure that we do need to update is how we categorize or what we consider an ATV. The, what we currently have is, I believe, the size of the engine and the weight of the vehicle. And even on the DNR site, they use the weight of the vehicle, and it's a measurement from the outside of the two front tires. So that is something that should be, should be updated. So I guess at this point, do you guys have anything else to add? Is there any questions?
My question is, how are we gonna deal with the issues with the dike on the south end? Where we, people that either, A, they own the land on the other side, how is that area gonna be dealt with? Is that gonna be an off, you know, we can ride it down there? Is that gonna be something that's looked at? I know there's already been a couple of questions on it that I've, I've heard.
And I actually got a phone call, there was an event, I didn't realize they were, I know they were using the greenway. I didn't realize they were using that area, 'cause it was just little spots. That area would be off limits. And as of right now, I would almost make, and maybe some people won't agree with this, but I think the east side of the levees, all those private properties and then east side of the levee all through there, there's not really good access to it. There's, they might have a lot of fun back there. But I think at this point in time and until something else is probably done, keep that area off limits.
I know in the years past, we've had issues with accessing it from the south, south end of it and coming up. I know we addressed that, I think it was two, three years ago maybe? And then I know that we put some signage, Mr. Strodel helped with signage down there. I think that's something maybe we need to educate the people that wanna be a part of this group, you know, and not to do, use that area. 'Cause, you know, we've had the issues with people driving up in the dike and shining the lights into the houses. So I, I think that's one thing we need to make sure we do on this. That it's, people are educated with that, that they can use that area. You know, it's private, privacy issues. I think that's one thing that we need to spell out and make sure it's correctly in that policy that they're not allowed there.
His question?
Yep. Um, one thing we're not talking about is, are we gonna allow any of this on the greenway near the rec trails? I don't see how the, the two are compatible. We can't have four-wheelers near the rec trails in the greenway.
And that is something that we have touched on a bit. Besides the snowmobile trails, I can't remember who was talking to me. What we're looking at is keeping that all off limits.
Perfect, yeah.
I didn't mark everything in there, but at this point in time, we're looking at keeping the greenway off limits. I do know with the River Access Plan that we're talking about possibly making certain fishing spots. I know in LeFay Park, there's some areas that are very highly, you know, a lot of people like to drive in that area. But we don't want people driving under the Lillian Mary Bridge. We don't want people driving on, you know, south there. We don't want... So I know I've spoken with Bree about it, we're gonna try and put something up even this year, I think they're gonna try. And so those tracks don't look like tracks and the grass is growing in. So if we lump everything together, the only exception would be to allow snowmobiles on the snowmobile trails.
And the beauty of that, see, our rec trails aren't used in the winter. So you're not really, I mean, other than some cross-country skiing and whatnot. But really, for the utilization of the rec trails, it's a lot more, I know, I shouldn't say that 'cause there are a few people who'd like to, the park and rec keeps them clean. We do get down there and walk the dogs and run, but it's less.
There's more, there's bicycles that do use it in the winter time too.
That's true.
Mr. Demers, do you have something, sir?
Uh, thank you. I was just gonna commend you for your work. I would just, like you said, make sure that all those areas, especially the lakes, are, are set as restricted or off limits. The only question I have is, I don't believe we have the authority or the ability to restrict the area that it doesn't belong to us. I think we could restrict up to those properties and on either side, and not allow access from the river. But I don't think we have the...
On the one side, we have, the greenway goes in a bus starting on the private property. And then, I was just looking at this yesterday. And then it's city-owned on the other side of that property, of the private property. So it's city-owned on both sides, so we can... And, and I already know that they don't want people walking through there, going through there. So, and I, the group that I was putting on the event, I had kinda, they've been around long enough. I thought they knew that was private property, and I've already talked to them about it. And they were very sorry that that had taken place. But no, it's, the maps I made, we can definitely update. Like I said, greenway and stuff will be off limits except for the trails. The one other thing that I wanna kinda add in, if, kinda like fish and wildlife, if you're hunting, if you're fishing, a guy can come up to you or a girl, whatever, can come up to you, make sure you have the proper licensing, that kinda stuff. I wanna make sure we have a caveat where you can be stopped, not by doing something suspicious, but you can be stopped so we can ensure that people, especially younger drivers, have the certification needed in order to operate that vehicle, or ATV, whatever it is.
Thank you.
Yeah, with that.
Anybody else have any questions on that? Appreciate it. That's good, thank you. Move on to the discussion on, see, license and fees.
Um, part of my job is working on city licensing and fees. One thing I would like to do is kinda separate our city licensing from permits. Permits I would consider block party, bonfire, those kinds of things, special event permits, so we can kinda separate the two. But coming... the two. But coming, and this has kind of been a work in progress, we've had a few other major things come up, such as a special election, so these kinds of things were, or this item for me was kind of put on the back burner. There are certain licenses that we currently have in the codes, and I would like council direction on if this is something you would like me to enforce, or if this is something that was from, some of these are back from the 80s, and is it something we still want to license, or do we want to let go? One thing that we have is garbage and refuse hauler. If, our ordinance states, if you don't have a contract with the city to haul refuse, you're supposed to have a license. Our license would run from January 1st till the end of December, and it would be a $200 license. We have an application for it. Basically, all of our licenses, we have individual applications for. That one, we have an application for. I have yet to see it ever be issued. Right now, we have our city contract with Countrywide. I know Waste Management is still operating within the city. I know there's some dumpsters, like, there's a place off on 5th, I can't think of the name of it right now, where it's like a roll-off. We have never issued this. Is this something the council would like me to enforce? I, then again, I'm not going to know every business that comes into town either, so there's, there's that aspect of it, too. Another one that I have a question on is photographers. I have yet, we're supposed to, I'm supposed to license every photographer, studio, transient. The, the resolution that I put in, there had been a $100 fee included, and that was removed, I believe, in 2009, so there is no fee, but I'm supposed to license them. There was no application. I've never found, looking back, none has, a license has never been issued. One license, or two licenses that have been issued, are, that I kind of have a question on, is our machine license and our amusement license. When it comes to machines, it's a $20 fee per machine, and a machine is like one, one of the games you play, or a crane machine, something like that. It's not, it does not include a machine that you would put a quarter in and you would get something out. So it does not include the gumball machines, like the machines that you walk in at Eagle's, and there's the little tattoos and stuff like that. That is not included. It's typically the games. Once you hit three machines, you're considered an amusement center, and the fee is still $20. I have sent letters to some of the businesses in town that have these types of machines, and never gotten a response from them. And I'm not sure how hard you guys want me to push for the collection of $20, or how much time and postage I should spend on trying to pursue that. So, if I, and I do have a list of, if you guys have any questions on what we usually collect in a year, I kind of went through and I wrote down what we usually do. If you have any questions on that. But otherwise, do you have questions for me, or?
Do you look at dances? Is that, is that outside of streets dances, or?
Dances are any public dances. So, we have three dance, our clubs, the American Legion, the Eagles Club, and the VFW get a yearly license, which is $175 a year. Heritage Days, they have started talking to me in the last few years, have gotten, because typically, I believe it's Friday night, they have a band there, and they have paid the $30 fee for their dance.
This isn't, is this a prom dance?
That's, that's...
Prom dance or something?
Yeah, that's not like a, a public dance, it's just a school dance.
Thank you. This is, as we dig into this, you know, Megan's done a lot of work and has been probably pulling her hair out quite a bit on this. As you can see, there's a lot of antiquated things, a lot of discrepancies. And I would suggest that we, while we don't not enforce what our resolutions and statutes say, I would say that we should look to amending this as a big thing. And maybe we want to put some sort of moratorium on it for a couple of months or something, while with a deadline of pre-budget negotiation. I would say sometime in August, we, or, you know, early September would be, should be plenty of time for people to start getting this stuff organized. But it goes back to the fact that we've kind of done this as an ad hoc process, and I think that's the, the part that we need to get fixed first. I would suggest that we take a look at all our permit and fee and rental schedules, and put them on a master sheet, a uniform thing, that we address every year as part of budgeting. Part of the reason why some of this doesn't get done is because it's signed as a resolution or as part of an ordinance in some of this, in some of this cases, and you don't look at it for eight years, and then all of a sudden you realize that you have, or 10 years, and you realize you have a photographer licensure, and that it's just not the same industry. So we should look at this and review it yearly for not only its appropriateness, but also for the fiscal impacts of it. I mean, when we look at fees that we charge for rentals, when we look at fees that we have for kids in, in our activities, when we look at our streetlight fee, when we look at all these fees that we have, there should be some, some basis in that number. And we should, as a, as a government, we, we have a responsibility to give what those, what that is to the people that pay it. And right now, because of the way we do it, it's just kind of a number that we put out there. And I, I don't, I don't say that, you know, staff or councils have done it with malice, but when you neglected it, there's, that's where distrust can, can, can come in. So I would challenge all the departments to look at all their rates, all their fees, all their rentals, and bring them as part of this long discussion, and have it all ready for pre-budget, or as part of the budget process, so that we know what the financial impacts will be when we change, or, you know, and it goes, you know, we're doing cemetery now, but part of that is, we haven't looked at it for four years. But if we look at it anyway, we'll stay on top of these, they'll better reflect what we're trying to do, and be more fair to our public.
Question I have from Mr. Murphy is, is this summer, are we going to have an intern? That was my idea.
Shadow's looking to see if you can volunteer.
My, my, I was just thinking, my, my thought would be, good, good project to have somebody do, you know, do the spreadsheet, Excel spreadsheet, and have it on there, and actually what income we have off of it, and list everything, and go from there. Maybe we need to relook at that and see if there's something else out there we can do as an intern.
And, and also the suggestions from staff, is this appropriate? Is it, you know, these are ones that shouldn't be, and these are ones that we probably haven't been charging and could, or something, so.
And then with that project, you can go through all that, and then have the meetings with, on Tuesdays, with department heads, and have it as a topic, and go through it. I think bringing it back and looking at that is probably a good thing, but I think what it needs to have is somebody that's dedicated to getting that done. I mean, that's what great of an intern would be able to work, and he'd be able to work with all the departments and have more hands-on than that, and I think it'd be a good thing to have. Mayor?
I would like to see what Megan offered, and that is kind of the historical perspective of what have been the revenues per category. Like if you have $20 or $30 per machine, or some gaming device, but you haven't collected it ever, right? You've maybe decided that the cost of imposing this is, are greater than the revenue that you might get. So that historical view of what have we actually collected, that would be helpful to know.
How many years back do you have?
Couple, three, two, three years of revenue? Is that a hard thing?
I, um, I have, no, I have most of that stuff online. It goes back probably seven, 10 years, something like that.
Two, three years would be great, just to give you, then one other thing, not everything on here has to be a profit center for the city. Like a block party. You're going to put up a couple barricades on two ends of a block, and you're going to maybe have the police kind of cruise by there a couple times that night, and these are all taxpayers. You know, not every one of these has to be a profit center. This is kind of a little service that the city can provide to our neighborhoods if they want to have an enjoyable time together. That's what I think. Probably it's a neighborhood that hasn't had a police call in a long time, and I mean, there have to be some benefits for living in a, in a city. So, that's my other last thought.
I think that's where having somebody dedicated to look at this and help Megan along with the project to get that worked out, so we can see everything. And that's why the spreadsheet would be worked out. You could go back two, three years, or five years, whatever you wanted to do, and then meet with the department heads and consider, well, this is frivolous permit fee to even have, so let's get rid of it, or vice versa. Mr. Riepe?
I see this one on junk dealers. It's amazing, I get a, we got that little letter from that gentleman, and that was one of his concerns, is that Arty's up there in the north end is starting to look like a junkyard. There, it's, I drove by it a couple times just to sit and look, and I went, it's looking pretty shabby.
Didn't you say, look, you mean you might want to acquire some of these items?
I, I offered them your dollars, and they turned me down.
Anybody else have anything for Megan? I think you got enough traction on that.
Yes, I think I'll try and put some stuff together, and maybe the separate work session and try and, at least, get the stuff put together, and start with the park.
Wonderful. Number nine, discussion of weekly and monthly video blogs. Mayor Gander.
All right. We have an excellent technology person in Corey, and we met to talk about the State of the City address last, whenever it was the last time that we met. And, boy, I don't know if anyone else has checked out the, the recordings that he does, and the feed that he does, and puts it up on the YouTube channel. We're getting some pretty high-quality audio and video, and he's actually, he loves it. I mean, he embraces it as part of our transparency, as part of letting the public see what we're up to, and I think he just enjoys technology that much, so he's all over it. So as we were talking about State of the City, and he did a, recorded that whole thing, put it up on the internet, along with that, he said, would you ever want to do on some interval, whether it's weekly or monthly, kind of a mayor's video to the community that we could put on our website? And I said, I'm not opposed to any of this, if the people want that, if the council wants that. I said, but maybe we could do it as a rotation. Maybe we could rotate, all of us as council members, from time to time, doing a video update that could be posted on the website. That would be great. Then as we chatted about that, I got some feedback, I think, from you, Mr. Olsted, about maybe this would be a way to receive some updates from our council members who serve on different boards and commissions, to pick up updates from the commissions that you serve on, and, and then put those as feeds that the folks could have a look at, and even us as council, we as council members could check it out, to what are we up to on these boards and commissions. Might be a neat way to, to kind of capsulize what happens at the, at the board meetings for that month, put them out there on the internet as video updates, and people could check them out, might be useful for them. So I have no specific agenda, I just wanted to give you the history of how it all started. Corey offered it. I said, perhaps, we could extend that out to the rest of the council, and then Mark thought, maybe it would be a way to update all of us on these boards and commissions. So it's wide open for discussion.
I think one of the things, you know, when you mentioned that, is something that I, I know I talked to Megan about beginning of the year, is having in the memo, updates monthly. I had a schedule set up. I know that we haven't started it yet, but about the committees and boards everybody sits on. But things like the annual meeting for the senior center can be on video, you know, it can be updated, or the, the monthly suppers that they have, you know, next month is what?
Taste of Spain.
Taste of Spain, okay. So, things like that. And we talked about even at the end of our regular council meetings, if they're in, at the end of the thing we have, our comments, that time, a person, councilman could indicate, okay, this is, I'm in planning zoning, or I'm on EDA, or whatever, they can make comments at that time also. So I mean, just something to think about, and that we could keep the citizens more informed on what's going on and what's happening, you know, things that you're looking to try.
Let me know your thoughts on that, if you think that some video clips posted on our website would be helpful, and I would gladly coordinate that with Corey, if you guys want to do that.
Mike, you have any comment?
Yeah, just, I think it's, it's an excellent idea. It's a tool that we do have, and in this day and age of shrinking resources from, in the news media, that the coverage that we get isn't what it used to be, I think it's, it's our duty to engage and reach out to the public and inform them about what's going on here, and it's available to us. So I, I like the idea, and I like the idea of, of it not just being, you know, the voice of the mayor's office, and that it does include all the departments and all of the council members. So, yeah, I, I think there's a way to do it. I think it, it's going to take some, some thought and some work about how to present it, so it, it looks professional and, and well-done. So, so, yeah, I applaud the idea.
Mr. Riepe, you had a comment, or you didn't? Okay, I thought you did, sorry. Anybody else have any comments on that? Mr. Better's just thinking about what he's talking about.
South End Bridge.
Yeah. All right, anything else on that? Okay, motion to adjourn, please, moved by Henry.
Second.
Second by Grasshull in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carried, meeting is adjourned.
Clarence.